Hug. Melton, Rowe, Festerson, Goodwin, Harding. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance and remain standing for remarks by Councilmember Festerson.
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to observe maybe three short things before we get started here today. The first is, I believe this is day 28 of the federal government shutdown. Very concerning to all of us and to local governments. We're starting to see some real impacts here, and one impact I'm very concerned about is the potential shutdown of SNAP and food benefits that could happen on November 1st. The city's looking at expediting some contributions we made through the city budget process to assist with that. I know the county is doing the same thing, but I encourage anyone who's concerned about that issue to also monitor that and be philanthropic in nature should that come to pass for those that are in need. Secondly, I would note that it's almost Veterans Day. I want to thank the Parks Department for repainting the Colonnade at Memorial Park just in time for a couple of ceremonies we have there in coming weeks, and invite the public to come to Veteran Shine On on November 6th, at 6 o'clock that night, and then also on actual Veterans Day, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m. at Memorial Park, the ceremony we have every year put on by American Legion One to honor our veterans and their families. And then lastly, I just want to say our thoughts and prayers are with the people of Jamaica right now as Hurricane Melissa, a Category 5, is hitting landfall as we speak. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask you to silence and turn off all electronic devices. I better do that myself. Reminder that you will have three minutes to speak on an agenda item. Please stay on topic. If you would like your comments entered into the public record, you can email the City Clerk's office at cityclerk@cityofomaha.org. The council members receive these and we read them. Finally, council members may ask members of the public back up to clarify questions, but not for extra time to speak. I would like to remind council members to speak directly under their microphones so the audience, members, and those at home can hear. And also, if you come up to speak at the podium, do the same. Make sure the microphones are in front of you so everybody can hear you. Thank you.
Item 6, to consider Class C liquor license for Blahas located at 721 North 14th Street.
Public hearing is open on item number 6. I believe we have the applicant, not by Zoom. Already throwing me a curveball. Mr. Houghton, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the council, David Houghton, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here on behalf of the applicant Bar Blaha, Inc., doing business as Blahas, which is located at 721 North 14th Street for their Class C liquor license. This is going to be located at the old Zip Line establishment. They intend to open in December. The concept will be a tap room that serves wine and cocktails as well. The hours of operation will be from 4:00 to 2:00, Monday through Thursday, and noon until 2:00 on Friday and Saturday. If any of the council members have any questions, I'd be happy to address them. The managing shareholder, Oliver Blahas, is also in attendance if you want to know anything else about the business.
Thank you. Is there any proponents here today on item number 6? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Hug. Melton, Rowe, Festerson, Goodwin, Harding. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 7, to consider a Class CK liquor license for Lula Bees Breakfast, Brunch, and Bar located at 902 Dodge Street, Suite 101.
The public hearing on item number 7 is now open. Applicant here today. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Looking for the Class CK liquor license for Sunshine Enterprises. We've purchased Lula Bees...
Can we get your, sorry, get your name and address?
I'm sorry. My name is Aaron Bonner. I add my personal address, 707 North Madison in Papillion. Looking for, transfer the liquor license to Sunshine Enterprises for Lula Bees Breakfast, Brunch, and Bar. We intend no changes to the business plan. Our hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Seven days a week. We're closed in the evenings. We're looking for a catering license so that we can take things to the nearby hotels and perhaps something offsite, but that would be down the road a ways. We won't be open ever past 10:00 p.m. We don't, we won't have any live music, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any proponents here on item number 7? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Hug. Melton, Rowe, Festerson, Goodwin, Harding. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 8, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for McGill Industrial Park, Replat 2, located north of 111th Street and Rainwood Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing is now open on item number 8. The applicant here. Good afternoon.
Kyle Hossi with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant. Make myself available for any questions council or the audience may have.
Thank you. Is there any proponents here, item number 8? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and second. Roll call.
Hug. Melton, Rowe, Festerson, Goodwin, Harding. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 9, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Ida Grove located southwest of 186 and Ida Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing is now open on item number 9. Is the applicant here today?
Good afternoon. Martin Pelster of Crocker Hook Law Firm, 2120 South 72nd Street, Suite Number 1200. On behalf of the applicant, I'm here to answer any questions you might have regarding the application. Kyle Hossi with E&amp;A Consulting Group. The engineers and projects also here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Is there any proponents here today on item number 9? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Hug. Melton, Rowe, Festerson, Goodwin, Harding. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items 10 through 16 were held on October 21st, 2025. Any council discussion? Got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Hug. Melton, Rowe, Festerson, Goodwin, Harding. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings for agenda items 17 through 27 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you're a proponent or opponent. I'll open the public hearing now. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And we're talking about a lot of snow removal in these ordinances that are being passed in both 17 and then 20 through, I think, 24, 25, and we're talking about inspectors for snow removal, but I thought in regards to snow removal, it would be a perfect time since we're starting, it's starting to feel cold and feels like it could snow right now actually inside this room. Please keep in mind that when it snows, you have to plow your residential sidewalks, which includes the spot across your driveway, within 24 hours of the snowfall ending. And I'm saying this because this board also sits as the Board of Equalization. And I have to tell you, one of the things, at least I know, I hate doing, and I believe I speak for my peers, is it's part of our job, but we have to do assessments for anyone when the city has to come out and plow your sidewalks for you. We have to assess that cost to the property owner. We don't like doing it, but it's our job because we can't force the taxpayers to pay for it. It's something that you're required to do by ordinance. So this is my reminder. I think there's at least somebody in the media here right now. If the media could remind everyone of that ordinance, because I would love it if one year we didn't assess anyone for snow removal for sidewalks regardless of the reason. And so this is also a reminder. If you see a neighbor that doesn't have their sidewalks plowed, perhaps go and find out if they have an illness. If maybe they're in the hospital, maybe they're out of town. If you go out of town, maybe tell your neighbor, ask your neighbor if they'll plow for you, or pay the 14-year-old kid that lives across the street that may need some extra money because it's a lot cheaper to pay that 14, 15-year-old than to pay the city contractors that have to come out. But before you call and report your neighbor to the city, I think it would be great to be neighborly and see if maybe one of your neighbors needs some help so that that doesn't have to occur. So that's, this is kind of my annual reminder of our snowplow ordinances in our city. And then I wanted to address, second, I know I had at least one email in regards to the inspectors and the cost of inspectors, and why don't we just have our city employees inspect the roads? And so I addressed that with actually Public Works just this morning. And what these inspectors are doing is they are hired to inspect the residential contracts. So we have private contractors that are going to plow all of our residential streets. We actually already passed those contractors last week. These are for the inspectors. What the inspectors do is they only go out right after the storm, right after the residential contractors plow all the residential streets. They look at the quality of the contractor's job, the timeliness of their job, and in my opinion, even more importantly, the invoices that then come back to the city for the job that they do. They review those to make sure that we're not getting overcharged and that the contractors actually did the job that they said that they did. It costs us approximately $300,000. That's an average per snowstorm to pay the private contractors to plow all of our residential neighborhoods. All the city employees are out on the snowplows, doing all of the main arterials, all the main roads, and our city employees are then, they inspect what the, our city, other city employees are doing. That costs, what we pay for the inspectors is approximately $10,000 to $20,000 per snowstorm. I think that, at least what Public Works has said to me, the amount we're paying to make sure that our tax dollars are getting utilized properly, it's a small amount, and I think that they're actually probably saving us the money that we're paying them. And we don't have city resources to be able to send city employees out because they're already kind of tapped when we have a snowstorm doing other things. And this is a job that really we only need them during a snowstorm. So it's not something we want to hire permanent full-time employees to do. So this is really a savings to the taxpayer, and that's why I'm supporting the inspectors as well as the residential contractors that we hire. And I know Austin's sitting over there, and I'm just going to look for a nod up or down. Is all that correct, Austin? All right. I got a thumbs up from Austin. So thanks. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Was there a motion on this? Okay. Got a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Hug. Melton, Rowe, Festerson, Goodwin, Harding. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 28, an ordinance to vacate a portion of Manderson Street abutting 7335. Manderson Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing is now open on item number 28. Are there any proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 29, an ordinance to vacate a portion of Arbor Street west of 9th Street to the North-South Alley. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing is now open on item 29. Are there any proponents here? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 30, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Keywood Building Group, Inc. for the construction of the Tranquility Park Sports Complex and Interceptor Sanitary Sewer Improvements.
The public hearing is now open on item number 30. Are there any proponents? Good afternoon, Mr. Linder.
Good afternoon. Jake Linder with Parks 1819 Farnum, and I'm just here in favor of the project. If you have any questions.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Eric Casper with JEO Consulting Group, 1120-213-Davenport Street, just here in support and here for answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Kyle Linden, 1550. Mike Fahey, Keywood Building Group, proponent four.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I know a lot of times we wait and we ask our questions on the third reading before the vote, but since we have everyone here today, and I think everybody's been looking at this project for quite some time, and I want to thank you all for coming down and taking the time to be here to answer any questions anyone may have. But Mr. Curtis, I just want, a lot of times council members get, they see a, they see a price tag. We're looking at about a $50 million, $50 to $60 million project for tranquility. And we'll get emails from people saying, I would rather that $50 million be used for affordable housing or to help the homeless or to fill potholes or to do something else that they think the money could be better spent on. Could you please explain that this money wouldn't exist but for the project, and the project itself is actually paying for itself, and could you explain where the revenues are coming from?
Sure. Steve Curtis, City Finance. So the project itself for the next 20 years is going to produce, and again, this is related just to the project itself, four types of revenue. The first is the sports complex itself will produce revenue in that there will be a number of events that will occur there. There will be the expenses of running those and maintaining the park, but at the end of the day, about $50 million or so is anticipated over the next 20 years of excess revenue, which can go towards paying off any bonds. The other three types of revenue are a turnback that's been currently passed by the state legislature, and I think our application will go in here in the next month or so. There is an EEA anticipated that we will share with the developer who is going to develop around that area. And then we're looking at doing some sort of hotel tax turnback to ourselves to also support this. When you add those three together, again, these are all specifically because of the park and the surrounding development. It's about $103 million. It would, that would support about $45 million or so, maybe $47 million of actual bonding. So there is a gap that I think they're still discussing with various philanthropic groups who may close that gap. That $52 million or so, my understanding is that would get you the new 12 fields. It would also get you the grading for four additional fields, and then we would either look for philanthropy or another opportunity to put in the CIP sometime in the not-too-distant future to finish up the other four fields. That then gives you a development that is, my understanding, is much more regional and potentially national by the time you finish that. So it brings in some pretty good-sized events. I know there's a detailed briefing, which doesn't help for the public discussion, a detailed briefing with some of the council people next week to go over that. But we have a model. I know we've worked with the developer. We've worked with the Parks folks to get a pretty good understanding of what those revenue sources might look like, what the percentages would be, how the splits would be, to the extent we are splitting anything like the EEA with the developer. The developer has at least one hotel prepared to go, but they're waiting to make sure this is a go because there's no point in having a hotel out there in an area where this improvement doesn't occur. This is all, will be owned by the city. It will be a city park and available to kids across the city as well as the whole region to the extent we do larger events.
Thank you. And so this money wouldn't be available because it's all user fees and basically sales taxes that are going to be turned back to pay for it, and the sales tax would come from the development of the surrounding Tranquility Park. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I think that that's really important because we're looking at, and we'll be using revenue bonds. Is that the, are those the bonds we'll be using for this?
These will be lease-purchase bonds, which is the way that we do most parks and improvements and parking garages for that matter.
Lease-purchase bonds?
Yes.
And so then they'll be paid back with these revenues that you just discussed?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. And if I could have, well, either one of you, who could give us the timeframe?
Kyle Linden with Building Group, Keywood. The project will roughly start earthwork this fall is the hope, and then summer of 2027 completion.
And when you say this fall, you mean like in the next 30 days? We can start doing the grading and some of those things?
Yes, ma'am, in the next 30 days.
Okay. And I think that's what, this has already been delayed quite a bit, about 18 months?
Yes.
Now, I do know that there, we heard Chicken and Pickle is no longer coming. However, it's my understanding that Chicken and Pickle no longer exists anywhere.
I can't comment on Chicken and Pickle though.
I see someone in the back back there that knows that answer who's not saying no. But I'm hoping that once we actually start this project, it shows that we're serious. We're now moving forward. So it's going to give anybody that has development that's already invested quite a bit into this area, that it's going to give them the assurance that their investment's going to pay off because they've already put money upfront. And so I'm very anxious to actually see it get started and that we follow the timeline that we're giving, that we're giving at this point. So.
That's correct.
Right now, I'm just looking forward instead of looking back, and I want to be positive about it. I think it's been a little frustrating trying to deal with the delay, but I also understand it's the cost of maybe the project and the costs have actually even gone up in the last two years since we started this. Is that right?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. And you are going to grade for the four, the additional four fields? So if we have the money, we'll be able to then turf those. So it's, we're doing 12 for sure, and we're going to have the other four already graded. So all we need to do is then put the turf in? Is that right?
There'll be some utilities and infrastructure that has to go in as well and potential another restroom building, but the grading is part of the project since the earthwork contractor will be on site. So you get the biggest bang for your buck by doing that now.
So then if we're able to get maybe some additional philanthropic dollars that we're hoping for, we could add that on and we could complete 16 fields?
That's, that's correct. We worked with the Parks Department to talk through a timeline on when that would be most advantageous. Obviously, the sooner it happens in the park, the more cost feasible it is.
Right. And I understand you're with Keywood and you're part of building it out, but you understand the entire process and where the funding is coming from. We chose Keywood through the CIMAR process, and so that, there were a lot of people involved in the selection of the contractors, and we did a design-build. Hopefully, we'll see some cost savings for it. We may have seen some delay because of it, but hopefully in the end, we're going to get a really good project and one that's going to benefit the whole city. So thank you very much for, thank you for coming down today.
Thank you.
I have nothing further.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm definitely supportive of this project too. As someone who used to compete there back in the day, this would be a major improvement from where we were at those times, and has the potential to be a regional draw, I think, for soccer tournaments throughout, throughout the region and have a big economic impact. I wanted to drill down just a little bit further on what Councilmember Melton was talking about there, and I do look forward to the briefings I think we're having next week on this as well that might get to my questions here. But Jake, this might be for you, or if not for you, it might be for Mr. Curtis. So I think there is a big difference between doing the 12 fields and the 16 fields when we talk about being a regional draw. And so what's, what we're being asked to approve next week would guarantee the 12 fields and prep the four fields. And Mr. Curtis, is that the overall number you're talking about when you say the $45 to $47 million is supported by the funding sources you described?
Well, I'll take that. And Mr. Linder may have some comments to throw on top of that. The $52 million includes the completion of 12 fields plus the grading for the additional four. And the thought there was, even though we didn't maybe have the full amount that we needed, we could make it pretty efficient by getting the groundwork and the grading done now so it's prepared. My understanding is to do, and I don't know if this is more than you asked, but my understanding, I think our working estimate, and I'm sure the engineers and others may have different numbers, but we've kind of earmarked in our mind $2 million per field later, and that's the part that we could either work to put into the CIP and try to get done over the next few years, or work with philanthropy. I think at 12, and this is where Mr. Linder may have some additional comments, but I think at 12, you're at least a kind of a regional, certainly a regional place. At 16, I think you can almost hold yourself out as almost more national at that point. And that's the, so you can, you can have some very substantial revenue at, at the regional level, and then maybe even more substantial once you hit the national level.
Okay. And so the delta between the lease-purchase bonds you described and the 12 fields that we know are possible is about $10 million, you think?
I think I'm showing more like seven, but yeah, it's about, I think our bonds will support 45, 46, or our revenue source currently, 45, 46 million. Total price to add to the 12 plus the four additional graded fields is about 52.
Okay. And by approving this item next week, we're still on track to potentially do that as long as we can find the sources of funding for that $10 million, right?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's what I wanted to know for today, but look forward to those briefings before next week and anticipate being supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis, as long as you're, you're up, a couple of extra questions on that. What, has there been any study then for the delta or the additional revenue that the additional four fields would produce?
My understanding, and Mr. Linder may have additional information, there was some study done, some information produced. It, my memory was the 12 fields actually was pretty substantial. 16 was better, but the 12 was pretty substantial. And I think there is a study out there that Mr. Linder or others may have. I may defer to him at this point.
Okay. And if we don't have that information today, as I think Mr. Festerson said too, we'll be getting some briefings on that. I'd be interested to know what, what if any studies were done for that, because I think if, certainly over a period of years, that additional revenue might be able to pay for those additional fields upfront rather than do those later on, because I would think to build it at 12, when ideally it should be 16, we should do that from day one, especially if we have the evidence or the statistics or data to support those revenues coming in for those four, if we were to add those four additional fields now is something that I would like to consider.
Thank you. There are no further lights.
Item 31, an ordinance to approve a purchase agreement with Bell Textron, Inc. to purchase training services for the Omaha Police Department Air Support Unit staff.
The public hearing is now open on item number 31. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 32, an ordinance to transfer $4,000 in the 2026 budget from community service programs to Parks Community Recreation.
Public hearing is now open on item number 32.
Do I go through proponents and opponents first? Okay.
Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing, let's see. Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Hug, you're recognized.
We've got new information that the original applicant will be able to comply with the filing requirements. So would it be appropriate now to make a motion to lay this over to December 9th? Yes. All right. I'll make a motion to lay this over to date specific.
Got a, do we got to do it date specific? Okay. We got a motion to lay over till December 9th. Is that correct?
Is that the correct date, Madam Clerk?
Got a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item thirty-three, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Nebraska Medical Center in the amount of six hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars, and authorize funding from the City of Omaha's Fiscal Year twenty twenty-four Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative Grant for the Encompass Omaha Project.
I will open the public hearing on item number thirty-three. Are there any proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha six eight one three two. I am opposed to this in its entirety because I don't believe there's any evidence that it will be enforced, so let's don't spend the money. My reason for doing so is a prime example here in our city that you are doing nothing about. You won't even discuss it with me when I have tried to bring it up to you. I have sent you emails you never replied to. This is the area, the mega saver at Hamilton and Northwest Radio. It is a danger to society there. It's not the normal homeless people that are causing the problem. It's people from across the street that are immigrants, mostly from Africa. Now, last week, you called me a homophobic for bringing this up.
Larry, you got to stay on topic.
Excuse me.
You need to stay on topic to item number.
I do want my comments on the public record also.
Okay. It needs to.
And I want my comments that I sent in emails in regards to this and the fact that you called homophobic last week for trying to bring this up.
Please stay specific.
It's a public safety issue.
Please stay specific to. Larry, please, Mr. Store, I'm going to ask you one more time, very calmly, please be specific to item, please have Mr. Store removed. He is out of order. Please, you're removed, Larry. Cut the mic.
In the city here, you won't even talk about it. Now, what's up with that? You violated my rights again.
There we go.
Should all be recalled for it, too.
Public hearing, we can move to thirty-four now.
They're intervening right now.
Is there any other opponents on item number thirty-three?
Good afternoon, Omaha City Council, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnsonny Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I was only joking with Mrs. Melton that, by what I was saying, but I'd have.
Donnie, can we get your address for the record?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Forty-nine twenty-eight now Fifty-second Street. And I wanted to ask this question because I see Mr. Harding and Mrs. Melton campaign signed back in the city council race by my school, the Concord. And I asked myself, when those folks got up and said they're going to walk to Utah, what happened?